All right, let's go ahead and call this committee of the whole meeting to order for the Assani City Council. If we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Doing roll call, we have all council members present. Do we have any public comment? Hearing done this evening, uh, look, uh, we don't need a motion to adopt the agenda here, I guess, so. I was gonna propose that we move E one to the next meeting. Maybe just for the sake of time.
That's a long one.
It's a long one and it's gonna be, yeah, we could spend all night just on that. And I was, kind of what my plan was, is maybe we should take it a few pages at a time over the course of a few months. That sound fair? Okay, I think that, otherwise, we're gonna all go crazy up here. It's too much, yeah. But, uh, but I did, Dan and I were talking and, uh, I mean, it is, it is a complex section of ordinance stuff and I think it'd be great if we can clean it up and, and simplify it, so. It probably is, yeah.
You don't realize that thing we spent, we spent a year on sign ordinances.
And it all came, all stemmed from County Route five. Cause there were so many distractions and sign, uh, I think we called it sign pollution. Up and down at, you know, County Route five.
This was long, this was long.
Oh, yeah, right.
Ever involved in.
But actually, some of it did clean up.
It did.
But, so anyway, I would, I would propose we move that to the next committee of the whole and then we'll kinda take it in chunks. If that's all right with everybody, do we need, is that all right with you guys? Okay, all right. So then we're moving on to E two, staffing at the liquor store. And I think that's gonna be Keith over there, or?
Yep, uh, mayor and council members, thank you for having me here tonight. The reason I'm here is to discuss staffing at the liquor store. Let me move this. What I'm kinda recommending is that we decrease our costs associated with part-time training, attracting staff by adding a full-time position and reducing our reliance on part-time. Since the stores opened in November of 2021, we've, um, hired a total of seventeen part-timers. We have, currently have nine part-timers on staff, one of which is out on a leave of absence. So we've been relying on eight part-timers, two full-timers. And we have, um, another part-timer that will more than likely be leaving us, um, within the near future. And it, it just takes a lot of time, it costs a lot of money to, to constantly turn over part-time. This is something that I had to look at pretty hard because my, my job is to make the city money. And I take a lot of pride in that and, and I do everything I can to maximize the, the amount of profit that I'm putting back into the city. I really do believe that if we were to offer, or, you know, add a full-time position with an emphasis on closing, it would cost us less money in the long term. So I'd, I'd like to have that discussion with you and answer any questions that you have. Another part of this, which is, was also, um, kinda eye-opening, uh, there is an attachment that kinda shows what other surrounding stores offer their staff. We pay our part-timers very well, um, they get fifteen fifty an hour to start and then they get a dollar fifty shift differential on weekends. And the reason for the shift differential is to get people excited to work on weekends, that's when we're busier. Full-time staff don't get that. And they're, they're, you know, they're more reliable, more, more is put on their shoulders. I mean, part-time staff are very reliable too, we're blessed to have some really good team members over there. However, the full-timers don't get the shift differential and they start out at sixteen eighty-one an hour is a step one. And if you add that up, you know, for a whole year, that means that the current, currently, somebody starting at full-time would earn just under thirty-five thousand dollars a year, um, in wages. You know, benefits, we, we do have a good benefit package through the city. I don't know all the specifics on that. But what I am asking you is to allow us to add a full-time position, reduce our dependence on part-timers, and then look at increasing the full-time starting wage to be more comparable to surrounding cities. And I do wanna add that, looking at the budget, um, we can do that without having to increase our budgeted amount for, for payroll.
And this person, Keith, if you could reiterate, it was to work a?
They'd be closing.
The closing shift?
Yep.
Sorry if I.
Yep, so they'd, so at the liquor store, you know, our busiest, busiest traffic times is weekends, evenings. You know, I say four o'clock is the golden hour, that's when, that's when everybody's showing up, coming up the highway, either heading north or getting home from work. So that's when we see the, the most amount of traffic, four o'clock on to, say like seven, eight o'clock.
I actually saw this coming because we do see a lot of turnaround in part-timers at the liquor store. Out of any department here, Cassandra Jenna, someone's resigning from the liquor store, part-time, hiring part-time, resigning part-time.
Yep. You know, and, and it does take time on the city hall side for Katie to, to put a lot of time in to find people. She's had a lot of instances where people ghost her, uh, where, you know, they go through the whole process and then she makes an offer and they never call her back. One time I had a lady start and she was there for two weeks before, you know, just, just long enough for us to go through all of the training, get her up to speed and then, you know, hey, I, I don't wanna work here anymore because, you know, something in my life changed and I, I can't put the energy I need to put into this job, you know? And part-time, most of our, most of our part-time staff are, are working full-time jobs. You know, we are lucky we have a few that, that aren't, um, that can cover day shifts, but day shifts we have, we have pretty good coverage for. It's evenings and it's the part-time stuff and it's weekends that, that we could use the, you know, that we've kinda got a hole there to fill. And, um, right now, you know, our, our, our full-timers that we've got, one is on step five, one is on step nine. You know, step nine, he's, he's getting paid twenty-one thirty an hour, um, for being step nine, that means he's been there for a while. You know, and it, honestly, he deserves more than that, he really does. And I've had, you know, a big, big part of my job is managing staff, you know? I wanna, I wanna increase sales, but I can't do that without staff being happy. And I'll tell you something that we, we hear a lot, that I'd like to think is a feather in my cap, but one can, one that can disappear pretty fast is when we're compared to other, um, liquor stores in the area. I won't say any names, but, um, people always comment how friendly our staff are and how they're not in other places. You know, and people aren't friendly because they're, you know, they dislike their job, you know? And that's why we're lucky that we have people that enjoy what they do and they're, they're proud of their job, they're, you know, they're proud of being a part of something, you know, the, the city and, and bringing money back to the city too. So I'd just like to, you know, see what you guys think about that and, you know, ask for your blessing in doing that.
Was there ever a wage study done on the liquor store employees? When that went through, how long ago was that?
The wage study that we went through, um, was collecting data before this whole.
That was before this liquor store?
Well, and before the whole increase, uh, we were pulling data from 2019. So before the whole increase of basically inflation, all those things that have happened where you could make eighteen dollars an hour at McDonald's, that wasn't a thing when we did our comp study, even though it wasn't that long ago. We, Katie's actually been already getting emails from solicitation from consulting services, hey, you're, if you haven't done your comp study since 2022, to be effective 2022, so 2021 data even, you're out of date because everything has just jumped up so crazily, especially in that retail sales and, I mean, grocery, everything, groceries, everything, you name it.
See, I think it's kinda started to come back down. And what I've, I've been experiencing, yeah. And I think it's been easier to find applicants at least. When you guys are advertising on Indeed, are you doing, like, are you boosting, well, maybe, I don't know, maybe Katie does that, I suppose, but?
She does the Indeed side, I, I usually put it on our Facebook page and then I boost it on there.
Sure, so I, I would assume is Katie boosting it, like they're paying per application and then you've got, you know, the seventy-two hours or whatever to, to either accept or reject or?
I'm not aware.
Cause I've had really, I've had really good luck with that lately, is you pay per application, but it's, she probably is already doing that, but. So when you're, when you're talking, cause I was kinda reading this one section here where if you, if you shift away from part-time hours and go more full-time at forty-two dollars a week as well, it would add, right? So, but is that with the idea that you're gonna raise the wage to the twenty or that's?
That, that statistic is if the wage stays the same.
Right, so do you know what it would be if we raised it to the twenty?
I don't because I don't know what we'd raise it to, so I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna speculate.
Okay. But twenty is what you were asking?
Yeah, I think, personally, I think that's fair, um, I think that's a good starting spot.
I, I don't think it's about the fairness, I think when you looked at incomparables, I asked you to go around to other liquor stores, is that, is that in here?
Yeah, so if you, if you see, like.
It's based upon what other liquor stores were?
Yep, um, and like if you look at the liquor store wage comparison, Cambridge starts their full-timers out at twenty forty-one. Princeton starts theirs at around twenty, he didn't give me an exact, and St. Francis starts at eighteen fifty, and then they go up to twenty-one after a year. There are two stories that I want to note on here that don't have full-timers, that's North Branch and Mora. But their staff are, all their part-time staff are in a union, um, so I don't think they have the, the leverage. I think they, looking at their net profit at the end of the year, that comes out with the, the state auditor's report, their net profits are quite a bit lower than, say like ours. I think that's in part because they're, they have to do so much more with their part-time rather than invest it in full-time dedicated staff.
Sure.
How many part-timers do you think you would eliminate to replace with one full-timer?
Right now with sales, I think we could be right around seven and be just fine. Like I said, we're at nine right now, so potentially two, two positions. So, um, you know, sales have been increasing and, and I don't know where they're gonna go. I can't guarantee that they're always gonna go up, but I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna do everything I can to, to try and make that happen.
So if we, go ahead.
Me personally, I think starting wage at sixteen eighty-one plus, if you think about the benefits that you get from a city job versus all, all, all the rest of these, I guess, uh, I think that's something that someone would really, I guess, see as a benefit and it's not really a super, I mean, it's not like you have to go to college to do this, you know, so it's, I think that's a fair starting point. I would rather see us put it up the way it is and see if we get anybody.
That's what I was gonna say too, is I think before we start raising wages, I think, let's go ahead and make the transition to that full-time position and replacing the part-time people with that, and then if we can't hire somebody at that, then we can come back and look at it, you know, next month or something. But I think, take a gradual step there and, and then see where that gets us, you know what I mean?
There's nine steps total?
Uh, my understanding was there's nine steps and then there's the potential for up to twelve, is that correct?
We don't use those, it's just one through nine, nine steps.
So, and the first step is right, currently, right now, is what?
Sixteen eighty-one is.
What's the second step?
Seventeen thirty-two.
What if we just eliminated the first step?
Yep. Seventeen thirty-two is the next step.
Just eliminate that first step.
But then you'd have to bump up everybody in pay.
Anybody that's on, still on that first step.
We don't have anyone on the first step, except for potentially to hire, and we can hire higher on this step. I think it's, if you, if you're talking about the person who's at step nine already, he doesn't have anywhere to go besides cost of living. We have three percent roughly between every step. So if you are looking to take one away and add to the back end, you're adding three percent to the top wage and eliminating the first one.
Yep.
I would rather try and hire at what?
Common, that people do that because then when you're hiring new, they're starting almost a dollar more an hour.
Yeah, it's a thousand dollars.
For the guys and gals that have been there a long time, they got another step.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if we started a higher step with the hire, we'd have to raise everybody up a step to be fair.
But, no, not at the same time.
Starting at seventeen thirty-two versus sixteen eighty-one costs us a thousand dollars for that first year. I mean, I'm not opposed to, to paying more, but I'm, I think Luke's, I think Luke's kinda spot on that it's, with the benefits, I mean, it's pretty good pay the way it is, you know, I mean, I just, I think if we advertise full, I, I, I just at least start with that, you know what I mean? And then, I'm not opposed to going higher if we have to, but, but I think, I'd rather start with just trying to see if we can fill a full-time position at that sixteen eighty-one, but.
How long does it take to move to a second step, is, are steps per year?
Um, step, you, you gain a step every two thousand eighty hours worked, so for a full-timer, it's, it's every year.
Yeah.
Part-timers, it's longer. Part-timers can be scheduled up to twenty-nine hours per week, um, without having to offer them benefits. And, um, right now, you know, our, our part-time staff averaging about seventeen and a half hours a week.
Is that forty-two dollars that you're figuring per week by doing the full-time, is that taken into account the benefits? Maybe I, I should look at that again, but?
No, that's not, not taken into account.
It's not counting benefits?
No.
And the, what are the benefits costing us, do you think, for?
So the benefits of our, if we take the, the one clerk that we have on step, uh, she goes to step six in a month or so. If we were to take hers, um, her wage is thirty-nine thousand five seven, forty-seven and her total wage and compensation with benefits is fifty-nine thousand six forty. It does depend if they take family benefits, that's a family benefited plan. If you were to take somebody who doesn't, if they don't take the city's insurance, I mean by benefits, then that is quite a bit less. But that, that's a benefited one.
So that's gonna cost us twenty thousand dollars more to hire a full-time than two part-time?
Plus the forty-two dollars a week, yeah.
Yeah, so that's another two thousand, so twenty-two thousand to hire a full-time.
But you're gonna gain someone, would you have the full-timer?
You're looking at, we've, we've spent eighteen thousand dollars to just in turnover.
Right.
And, and you're constantly investing in people. And that, and that's where I'm like, you know, I, I wanna make as much money as possible.
Right.
And that, that's a tough number to see and to, to justify, but you, we really will be better off, you know, with a full-time position cause we'll have that consistency, we'll have that level of service that we won't have with a revolving door.
Would you advertise that full-time position, basically they will be working weekends unless they take vacation, or how?
It'd be, it'd be evenings, evenings and every other weekend.
Okay.
And it would include Friday, so I'll try to get that Friday filled so we're not using overtime.
Yep.
And would full-time, would they have a wage or a shift differential then for full-time or not?
Right now, they don't.
Okay.
Right now, they don't.
Okay.
Did you say you're getting, right now, the part-timers are getting overtime though?
No.
No?
No.
If part-timers call in, they'll sometimes need to use full-timers to fill in. So I think that that was the benefit of having this person work the evenings, so then they can take those harder shifts where people would call in.
I'm for it if we're just gonna keep it at sixteen eighty-one, I think with the benefits package, I think it's, I mean, for a, I hate to say it, but unskilled position, it's, that's pretty good with that benefit package.
But it is a skill to deal with the public.
Oh, right, of course.
I mean.
I say, I mean, I mean, I say that cause it's no degree technically to, to do it. I think it's pretty good pay and I think I'd rather do that more than fast food. I mean, a lot of people like liquor stores and that's in such a nice liquor store compared to all these, you're in a much better work environment, so that's something, I mean, that's something I would consider if I was applying too.
And just to clarify, that benefit number that I give is the cost to the city, not what they're getting in benefits.
Right.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yep.
So they're still gotta make their rent payment or mortgage payment on that sixteen dollars?
Right.
Keith, do you think if we paid more, more on the part-time side? Because, I mean, I don't know how many part-time people you have at the step one, but, I mean, if you paid more on part-time, would you be, have, I don't know if they'd make any, any difference really?
I don't think so, honestly, um, most of our part-timers are on step one because of that high turnover. So I don't, and a lot of times, part-timers don't leave because they hate the job.
Yeah, right.
Part-timers leave because their, their lives, lives change, you know? All of a sudden, they've got enough money or they got a bill paid off where they can not have to work two jobs. You know, and I, I totally respect that and recognize that and.
I trust his numbers, I think we should go along with his plan. And keep the steps the same for now and, and maybe look at it next year.
Yeah, with those benefits, being another twenty, twenty grand.
Right.
Were you spending that much, it looks like, just in turnaround and, and training?
Well, I mean, how much, I mean, fifty-six hundred dollars for HR, I mean, she's already on the payroll, right? So I mean, are we, and we already have Keith on payroll, right? So I mean, fifty-six hundred of time and hours spent, but I mean, that's not, you're gonna spend that money regardless, aren't you?
Yeah, but I, I do wanna just reiterate that, you know, the amount that we're budgeted right now for wages, for full-time wages, we would not have to change that to, to add this position.
Right.
We would, we would still come in below what we're budgeted for.
But does that include the benefits?
The benefits are separate, but.
Right.
No, I think when Mike calculated it, we did, it does include the benefits. What it doesn't include though is any additional pay per hour, that has not been calculated in.
Okay, that's.
You see what I'm saying there, George, with, with that, that number of fifty-six hundred, out of that eighteen thousand that we're spending, we're already spending that fifty-six hundred. It's, it's time spent, but I mean, we're gonna spend it either way, so we're, you're not gonna save that, that part of it regardless, you know what I mean? So you're looking at, I don't know, I, I, I just, I think I would keep going with, with the part-timers, but if they're not getting overtime hours and we're, I don't know, if it was my business and it was my money that I was looking to try to put in my bank account at the end of the year, I don't know. I mean, I get where you're coming from too, though, I mean, and I made the same decision where you, I don't know.
Revolving door.
I get it, yeah, I get it.
And then you're just gonna spend more money on training, more money on.
I had somebody made it twenty minutes the other day.
Yeah?
You got, you got me beat.
So, so I mean, I get it, I understand where he's coming from, but.
Found out he is allergic to cheese?
I don't know.
Yeah, they keep the shirts.
I don't know, that would be my thought, I guess, I, I just, I'd have a hard time pulling the trigger on that much more and I guess I would keep trying to plug along with, with the part-time people, but, but that's my two cents.
I think you have two problems, right? We should at least try and resolve one of those two.
Being the second one, what, what were the two problems?
Well, you got problems with part-timers, revolving door.
Yep.
And then you got a problem with being, having competitive wages.
Well, competitive wages.
One out of the two.
Yeah, I mean, I get what you're saying, competitive wages from liquor store to liquor store, but I mean, if somebody lives in Assani, they're not gonna probably drive to Princeton when they could get, I mean, maybe they would, but I mean, I don't, I, I think Luke's point where it's.
They have a competitive advantage.
It's competitive for our market that we're in, you know what I mean? We're not probably being compared.
And that's why, I said, maybe wait, wait for that and part, down the road, we'd look at, like a job study, which would probably come anyway, citywide here, but, um, or a wage study, I should say. But given that full-timer, so, well, you know, and then worry about the second problem when we do wage study next year, year after, whenever that happens.
And every time he's got a part-timer that doesn't show up, he's gotta bring a full-timer in and they're paying them overtime. It, it's, it, it's.
How much are we paying for full-time overtime?
It varies, I don't know if I, do you have numbers recent?
It depends on which employee comes in and which step they're on, you know?
Yeah, right.
It's time and a half.
Right.
I, I, um.
But I mean, how often does it happen, is what I'm saying?
Last year, we're at about twelve thousand six hundred and thirty-six, I believe we closed out the year in overtime last year. But I would say, I, I would assume it's gonna be more this year, just because we've had the higher volume, so it takes more stock and more things and we can't have no one there to stock it, so my, my impression is that would, and I don't know, I, I, I feel very grateful that we have the staff to flex as much as we do for the full-timers we have, which does really keep the cost down and it's great that they notice that because we do have some really dedicated full-timers and they will just like, hey, I'll, so-and-so called in sick tonight, I won't come in, I'll come back in later. You don't get that, I feel, very often, even though I don't work in retail, so I don't really know, maybe that's the norm, but I feel like it wouldn't be. And I think that we've, that kind of fluffs that number of overtime to not be as much having the staff currently that we have, so I don't know if we could always bank on that. Last year was twelve thousand six.
Okay, yeah, well, that changes things then for me.
Yeah, it does.
So if you're spending twelve thousand on overtime for full-time people and you don't think you're gonna have to do that anymore, then I think.
I mean, there might be a small chance, I suppose, but probably not as flexible as seems like there is.
Yeah, I mean, it would, it would plug a significant hole.
Yeah, there's not enough of a, even if there was a cost savings, there's not enough to justify the added headache then, so. Yeah, no, that changes my opinion completely then, if we're spending that much on overtime for full-time people.
The pay study, you know?
Later.
Yeah, I'd say start, keep the pay the same, but go ahead and, and move forward with the.
I think we'll get plenty of applicants at that price, people know the benefits are good, I mean, it's.
And we're still gonna have close to these same figures even with seven part-time employees because you're only losing a couple part-time employees, so the eight thousand seven 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 is gonna just turn into maybe six thousand and your cost of posting jobs isn't gonna change much, either is your, uh, wages. It's all gonna just go down a little bit by, by replacing two, that's just a thought. But I, there's a big benefit to having a full-time employee compared to a, a part-time employee, I won't argue that.
And they're gonna also see that there's steps, there's a ladder for that part, full-time to climb, um, so.
I would just like to see a better cost analysis on, on this, it's kinda misleading till you really think about it, look into it. I know you did a great job and I, I, I get it. So the decision we have to make tonight would still have to go to council to be voted on, or?
Well, we can, because we don't have it written down, the exact number of any staff, it really is the bulk of the, um, just the wages added together. It's, if it's not exceeding, if he's able to make the numbers work and not exceed what we have, it really is just the consensus of direction and we will post for a full-time position. It doesn't need to go back to council, so we're not asking for any additional funds. So that's, that's what we will do.
I'd say go for it.
I think the liquor store is gonna grow too, so.
Yeah, I just think it, you might be have some cost savings by sticking with part-time, but I just don't know that it's, it's not enough to, to justify not doing the full-time. So if, if you're paying that overtime out, that, that totally changes my, my opinion on that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'd say go for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then maybe look and do, for future discussion or, when, our last time we had wage study was when?
Two thousand nineteen.
It took effect in twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty?
So using twenty nineteen information?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, yep, you're right, yeah. And then what do they recommend, every five years, every three years? I know you do it every year to, to, but not, doesn't necessarily get adjusted every year, but.
Five to ten years, I believe, is the recommendation, um, depending what the market's doing.
So, look at it again in whatever, two years or?
Yeah.
All right, moving on to E three, the low potency THC product discussion, I think this is gonna be you again, Keith.
Yeah, I got, I got three of them with you guys tonight, uh, four actually, one, one other one got added too. So, um, low potency THC, um, I, I would like to get permission, your guys' blessing, to start offering the Delta Eight, Delta Nine gummies and beverages at the liquor store. There's some legal requirements for that, um, you know, with the city, we gotta register with the city. And, and with the state, yep, that, that doesn't cost anything, the city, we gotta pay a fee, but, um, there's several stores around us that are, are either selling it already or looking into it. I've been talking to a lot of sales reps whose job is to sell me stuff, so I always take what they tell me with a grain of salt and, you know, look into it. But what, what I've been told is, in, in the metro area, you get up to about Blaine and then the, the sales kinda taper off below that, it's, it's on fire. And there's a lot of people selling a lot of stuff. Part of my job too, you know, I wanna sell as much stuff as I can, but responsibly. You know, alcohol's a drug, THC is a drug, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be irresponsible for that in the name of profit. I want you all to understand that a hundred percent. The Delta Eight, Delta Nine stuff is hemp derived and I'm waiting to hear back from our credit card company who's waiting to hear back from their underwriters because at first they told me that we couldn't do credit card transactions, um, at all with th, those products because they're, um, illegal on the federal level. After a little more research and talking with other store managers, hemp was actually legalized in the two thousand eighteen farm bill.
That's what I was gonna say.
So two thousand eight, so Delta Eight, Delta Nine are technically legal, um, on the federal level. We're, we're set up right now where we're gonna be able to, with permission, start bringing in a few items, we're not gonna, you know, offer the world. We're not gonna have a, the kind of selection that we have with everything else. But we're gonna, we'd go slow, see how it goes. But we, we can do it cash only until we get permission from the credit card processor to do it, um, you know, credit card wise. You know, eighty percent of our sales are, are credit card transactions, so to have to do it cash only, that's a pain in the butt for everyone, us included. But I think there's, there's a potential for, you know, bringing this in, selling it responsibly and making a lot of profit. I think the average profit on a four-pack of. And making a lot of profit. Um, I think the average profit on a four-pack of the THC water. Is like seven dollars and fifty cents, so it's like a thirty percent markup. The average store, what I got was, told was around eight hundred eighty, eight hundred and fifty dollars in profit. I don't remember if, well, four hundred and fifty dollars per week is their profit, um, but I, I think we can do more than that, you know, we're better than your average liquor store. So I, I could see those numbers being higher. I was also told that there's, the sales and the, the gummies themselves are a lot higher than, than the. The liquid, uh, because the dosage is, is more cost-effective that way. So we, we've got a spot behind the counter where we can keep the edibles, which have, have to be by law, behind the counter. And then we also have an area up front where we could have the, the liquid cooled. The other big reason that I want to be able to bring this in is because if, if this is such a big mark. Big item, especially down in, in the metro market, and we're trying to tap into people heading north from the metro. Then if we have that, that's gonna give them another reason to stop, and if we don't, that's gonna give them a reason to stop somewhere that does. You know, and the, the one that comes to mind, Cambridge, Mora. Cambridge doesn't carry it right now, but they're looking at it. Uh, Mora does carry some of the liquids, they don't have the gummies, um, but, you know, people just keep going and, and make their stop there.
I have a question about the cash.
Yep.
So that cash will be able to be treated as any other cash, whether it's.
Yep.
Whatever products you sell in that store. It won't be treated any separately? Will it go right into the?
Yep.
Bank, general account?
Correct. We, we won't have to have, like, if we, if we were selling cannabis, like, if the city did vote to look into doing a dispensary. Then you'd have to, that cash would have to be separate.
Okay.
But this is, this is Delta Eight, Delta Nine, which is hemp derived, and that's what makes it.
Well, my concern is if the credit card companies are unwilling at this moment to accept it, there must be something there. Do we need, do we need our attorney's advice on this to make sure?
They're just, cause their credit cards are, their credit card companies aren't just based in Minnesota, don't go elsewhere.
Yeah.
They cross into all, all states.
Right, I, I agree, but.
We use a Maida, Amida processing, and their, their original reply I got from them was, you know, it's a gray area, some, some. Credit card companies don't bat an eye, they do it just fine. We would have to, they would have to put us into a higher, like, a dangerous tier and charge us more. So to me, their goal is to charge us more. So I, I'm waiting for a reply on an email where I sent him, um, all the information that I've gathered. Saying that, you know, this is legal, why are you trying to charge us more? Um, and his, his reply was, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send this to our senior underwriters and get an answer for you, because you brought up a lot of valid points. So I'm waiting to hear back from that.
Okay, do we have an ATM in the liquor store?
No. And I've, I've, that's a great point. Um, I've been thinking about that too. Um, there was a recent survey sent out by the MMBA. Um, asking members who had, um, ATMs and how much profit you make, and do you own it, or do you rent it, and all that stuff, so. I mean, personally, there's not a lot of profit to be made off of ATMs, but if we were carrying the low potency stuff. And the only way to buy it was cash, it probably would be a good idea to bring an ATM in. But I, I would rather push the credit card thing, you know, than, than have another expense, another thing to maintain and. And take care of.
Would it raise the credit card rates for everybody, even people buying liquor? It would so only be on the, the TH side purchases?
Right, and, and we don't, we don't pass the credit card fee onto customers. So we, we absorb that as part of our margin, like.
Okay.
So there are some stores that, that have chose to do that. I believe Princeton, um, the liquor store in Princeton does that actually. I know Bram does that. If you use a card, they, they charge you extra. You know, I, to me, I, I don't like that idea. I think, you know, we're making our margin up in volume where they're, they're not. And so they're, they're making that up.
Rum River BMX has a cash machine. They're, they get the percentage.
Yeah.
If you go there to get cash with your card, that percentage that you get charged, some are three, some are two, some are three point seven five. That money goes to the Rum River BMX Association. It doesn't go to a credit card company.
Sure.
So that, if, you know, and I'm not sure if they lease theirs or how their agreement is, but. So that percentage would go right back in, into the, so if he's making thirty percent. Then he's gonna make another three percent off that cash transaction through with the machine.
So are there other credit processing companies we could use? Because there's gonna be a competitive advantage. There's, I mean, now that it's. It's a gray area, but there's gonna be companies that are like, oh, we won't charge you the extra on this, so I think the competitiveness of the industry is really gonna make it so they can't charge us extra.
I think, I think you're absolutely right. I think that's gonna be an issue that kind of evolves.
Yes.
Where you're gonna get credit card companies that, right now, that, you know, with, with cannabis becoming legal.
They want the money.
With, with the Delta Eight, Delta Nine stuff, there, there's a lot of communication. There's a lot of misinformation out there, and, and there's a lot of people that. Would rather make the, the safe decision than the right decision at times, and I, and I don't blame them. But that's when you present the information and, and you tell them, hey, you might be wrong, here, here's some facts to consider, and then hopefully they. See, see the light and.
I think it's a great idea to, uh, to increase profits at the liquor store. I, I, I'd go full blast with it. I mean, you, you have my okay on, on whatever you wanna do within the legal means of doing it, definitely.
I'd prefer to see credit card, I think.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't, it doesn't matter to us if they use a credit card.
It doesn't, yeah.
It only matters to them if they have to use cash or a credit card.
Right, I think.
It's not making any skin off his nose. It goes into the same bank account, and there's no deferration. It isn't making his work any harder. It's just like, sorry, sir, I have to take cash only. I went to, I think the liquor store on Cooper's Corner. I went down there. It wouldn't take my debit, they wouldn't take my cash. The only way they would take it is if I gave them a credit card or debit card. And I just kinda looked at them, are you flipping crap? What, you know, I mean, what I'm saying though is, it's no skin off of his nose. If it's cash or credit.
But it could affect sales, because there's a lot of people.
I'll push the credit card, um, option, because that is, it is convenient.
Convenience, yep.
It's convenient for the customer.
Correct, and that's what I care about.
It doesn't make a difference to me. We actually make more money if it's cash, but the reality of the world today is most people don't carry cash.
You know, and going back to the cash machine thing, you know, when I go north, I stop and get cash. Cause I get up north, a lot of places don't take the credit cards, they want cash.
Cash or checks?
Cash or checks. In the small towns up there, by bait, cash, you know, um, they might want to go to the local tavern. After fishing, they're gonna spend cash. So I, I would, I would look into the cash machine.
Yeah, put something together, yeah, put something together in an ATM machine.
I mean, that's.
I'd say go ahead.
Might be a good use, yeah, true.
Or if they need cash, they're gonna stop at the liquor store. Well, then they gotta go to the gas station and get cash.
Good point.
If, if, it could be there for multiple reasons, convenience to the customer, the city gets a percentage.
You can look at, you could, you know, that's something else you can do another date. I'd say look into what it would cost to buy a cash machine. And with processing fees, but as far as I'm concerned, go ahead on your low potency stuff.
Yep.
What was the date when the federal government recognized it to be legal?
For the hemp, it was the farm bill that passed in two thousand eighteen.
I, I was gonna ask you, so, so I, how do they know what your, they don't, I mean, if I was just to start selling gummies at the pizza restaurant, I mean, I just. Add it into my computer and it processes, and then the credit card company doesn't know what I charged for, so if I were you, I would just do it.
I think that we got information, the reason why we didn't consider that, is because.
Well, right, but the credit card company doesn't get a copy of the receipt.
The credit card, if they found out, the company or something, correct me if I'm wrong, Keith, but I thought one of the emails you sent to me is, they pulled money out, when, if they found out, they did.
There was, what it, I think what it said to summarize it, it was there, there was the threat of the federal government freezing the funds because they were related to THC.
But we know.
Honestly, I don't think we'd even have to worry about that.
I wouldn't even worry about it. I would just do it, cause we know it's legal. And, and I, I was gonna say the same thing when you brought it up, that the twenty eighteen farm bill is what made that hemp stuff legal, so. Yeah, I would just go with it.
That covers what then? That farm bill covers?
Um, all hemp-related, which Delta Eight and Delta Nine are, are made from hemp, and my understanding is, it's the. They like crush the stocks and, and everything, and the oil from it, they, that has like the THC in it, or. Uh, I don't even remember the word, what it's called, but they concentrate that, um, turn that into a concentrate, and that's what they use to make the. The gummies and that liquid.
And I know two business owners that do sell the product on, and they only take credit card. They've never had a problem, so.
And, and one thing I wanna add, just, it's kind of interesting too, is, you know, I've had local breweries that we sell their beer. And, and we're proud too, and they're happier than hell that, that we're helping their business, girl. Um, they're, they've already been asking me, you know, can I, can we stock their THC-infused beverages, you know? They're looking at making it. I mean, it's a brand-new market that doesn't exist hardly anywhere else in the state.
Right.
And it's, and it is a different, it is different from THC. I mean, it's easy to lump them both into the same thing, but there is a big difference as well.
Is it, will it affect, uh, insurance rates at all?
Nope, not at all. I did check with that too, so everything's, everything's covered.
This guy rolling.
Yep, good rolling.
Yeah, I'd move forward with it. Process the cards, don't worry about it. Does that, that sum, sum it up?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
E four, liquor store donation discussion.
Okay, I wanted to bring this up. Um, I, I know you guys at the, one of the last council meetings, you were talking about. Um, donations in, um, Iscany County beyond the yellow ribbon, so I just wanted to talk about that a little bit with you. First of all, we do give veterans a, a ten percent discount every day. Um, I think that was one of the first things that I ever sat.
That was, now that's every day?
Every day.
I thought it was originally only on Tuesdays.
It used to be on Tuesdays, and then I think that was the first time I ever came to a meeting here was to ask you guys to change that to every day. And so we, we give veterans a discount every day, and I'll tell you, customers love it. Residents love it, and we get people that comment a line, you know, that's really neat that you guys do that, even when they don't get the discount. So thank you for letting us do that. We do four big supply drives throughout the year, and they're all the MMBA-sponsored events. I think it's important not to overdo donation requests and stuff. You know, we've, we've raised quite a bit of money since we started asking people if they wanna round up at the register. You know, fifty cents, four cents, you know, ninety cents at a time. Um, we're doing one right now for the fire department. We, and I, I ran some numbers, you know, to just give you guys an idea of the impact of the roundup compared to a bucket on the counter. Um, we've got a bucket on the counter that, um, I counted today, um, since the first of August, we have ninety dollars in it. So awesome, we've had people donate ninety dollars. The roundup thing, we've, we have, um, twenty-two hundred dollars from people. You know, rounding up pennies.
Here, fifty cents there, and it adds up.
Yep, and people, people are excited to donate. However, if experiences showed me, like, after a month or so, or even getting close to a month. People start getting irritated. Um, staff start getting irritated, because you, you're asking somebody, would you like to round up, and they, they give you attitude. Like, you know, you know, I pay my taxes, what else do you want from me? You're bleeding me dry. I don't, I don't want us to become known as the liquor store that's always asking for more. I, I take a lot of pride, and I know the city takes a lot of pride in being very community-oriented, um, and I appreciate that. And I, I apologize for dropping the ball and, and not having the, the supply drive for the troop thing happen. Normally, it happens in July, and it kinda snuck up on me and, and went past without even noticing it. In the past, we've done Beyond the Yellow Ribbon for that and Plan Two in the future. Uh, usually Anheuser-Busch sponsors that, and you guys probably all heard they're going through a little bit of turmoil. Certain things, so.
What was all that about?
I don't know, exactly, but I, I know that they, they still do like donations, um, for cases sold. But they didn't coordinate anything with the MMBA, and so it didn't happen. Um, so what I'd like to do with, with you guys' blessing is to hold our own, you know, fundraiser for a month. For Iscany County Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, um, do the, do the roundup thing. The local distributor, um, McDonald distributing. Their, their Anheuser-Busch distributor, they felt horrible that didn't happen as well. Um, so they're willing to help out in any way they can with advertising, signage, you know, promoting the event. And we'd run that one. We aren't running, um, a different one.
Big billboard?
I don't think they'll do a billboard, but, you know, we'll have, we'll have all the signage in the store, um, we'll advertise on our Facebook page and, and, you know, we'll get. People excited to contribute to a good cause, so, but my biggest concern though is that, you know, I, I understand the intention. Of having, you know, showing our support for veterans and for active-duty personnel, but I, I'm, I'm afraid of asking people to do it every, every day. To donate every day. Myself personally, I would, I would choose to go somewhere else, just because I'd feel bad for saying no all the time.
Well, and one thing that we did have come up, um, after that, that discussion and talking with Keith was, when we talked to the attorney, it becomes. More of an issue. If we, we've had these same four that we've been doing year after year, um, but when we start introducing, doing it for. One group or organization over and over, now you create a legal liability, because you're not making it available to all. Organizations, and then the recommendation of having a policy for how you accept the organizations. And I think that if we do keep it back to what we had, knowing that, now that we all know that we do the veterans discount every day. That, then we don't have to open that Pandora's box.
I guess for me personally, it's great that there's these organizations, but I would, I wanna see more on a local level, like the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. They, they directly impact our community in a way that's easily measurable, versus a lot of these are bigger companies, and you don't know exactly where the money goes. It, it's, a lot of it's probably not coming here, so it's like, you're sending money out of your area.
So you, you bring up a real good point, um, and if you look at those attachments, that, like, the, the troop drive from last year and stuff. Um, even the food supply drive and stuff, so when, when those are, when those are organized, when those are sent out, they, they give. Every store in the state an option to go with like a statewide or a national organization, or find somebody local. We have always done local, because quite frankly, that's what I care about, is local. I, I, you know, like the food shelf one does the Minnesota Vikings traveling thing. I don't care about that. That's not gonna come to Iscany. You know, but we don't have a food shelf here, but we have one in Cambridge, so we went with the closest one, which is Cambridge.
Yep.
You know, the, the firefighter fundraiser that's going on right now goes to the Minnesota Fire, something, I don't remember the name, but it's, it's a great organization. Don't get me wrong, but they're not local either, so we're going with the Iscany Fire District, cause they're, they're in our community, they're in our store. You know, and we're actually coordinating an event with them too, um, to have like a little touch of truck event. On the twenty-fifth, from five to eight, you guys are all invited. If you'd like to come, um, just gonna have some fire trucks set up, gonna have. Invite people to go check out the trucks, check out, you know, visit with the firefighters and talk to them about anything they want to. You know, maybe, maybe they'll even recruit a few people.
Last year, I think.
Last year, we had the trucks there, and they had their big ladder, uh, big ladder truck up with a flag sticking up over the trees. It was fantastic. It looked, it looked great. I mean, you're driving down the highway, and you see a friggin' flag sticking up a hundred feet in the air, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna look. So, I mean, we, we really do try to do the local ones, and that's all we do, honestly. We don't do the big, the big ones.
That's why I brought that up a couple meetings ago, just because I, I would like to see, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, they do a great job, and I wanted to help them with anything they could. And, and like, if I were to go to the liquor store and they'd ask for a donation, and they asked for the fi- fire department donation, I would assume it would mean in our community, because it is the city liquor store, so.
And you get, that's the first thing people ask too, when, you know, um, when you're asking them to donate, well, who's it for?
Right.
And, you know, I put myself in customer shoes all the time, and if it's for some organization that is down in the metro or, or not even in the state. I ain't donating anything.
Exactly. You can't trust that the bigger government's gonna do right with it, or bigger companies are gonna do right with it for your community. It's the same thing with. What we're doing here.
Yep, keep it local.
I have a question about the Folds of Honor. It looks like it's all through Anheuser-Busch.
Yep, and that was the one from last year, and they're still doing that Folds of Honor, but that's like per case of beer sold. And so what they do on that is, whenever we buy, um, say we buy a case of beer, which we, we buy like a pallet at a time. Say a pallet of Budweiser, they'll donate, um, a dollar. They'll take a dollar of that profit from the distributor and donate it to that Folds of Honor.
And that's not local, it looks like.
No, so, and that's where we don't, we don't raise funds for Folds of Honor. We raise funds for, that's where we have the option of either going with Folds of Honor. Um, or going with Iscany County Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, or a different veteran organization, but we chose Iscany County Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, because they do. A great job and have such a big impact on the, on that community.
That's what you think, you got my permission.
Okay.
Okay, that was, I mean, that was really the reason we were bringing it up was because it, it hadn't happened or some, I don't even remember the conversation exactly, but it hadn't happened and we were wondering why it hadn't happened and we did one for the pet drive and we thought maybe our priorities were mixed up. Or something along those lines, but it just got messes all basically and.
We, we will do one.
You're gonna do it, okay. All right, perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, so E five, mobile units at the liquor store discussion.
Uh, this one should be real fast and easy. Uh, basically just want to get you guys' opinion on food trucks at the liquor store. A couple of weekends, a couple of Fridays ago, I had a food truck call and said, you know, hey, we're gonna be at Thunder Brothers, but we're not supposed to be there until four. We left a little early. Do you mind if we set up in your parking lot for say a couple hours? I asked them if they're licensed with the city. Yes, they were. Um, said, you know, sure, once you get here, find me so I can make sure you're set up in a spot that's not gonna block traffic or pose any safety issues. And they set up, um, they have really good pork chops. I enjoyed my lunch that day, not gonna lie. But we also had customers, you know, lining up for the food truck.
What days are you thinking and what time periods?
Well, so what I, what I want to avoid is turning into a scheduler for food trucks. I just, I just want, I want permission to say like if, if, um, if a food truck calls and says, can we set up in your parking lot? I want to know that it's okay with you guys. And I want, you know, I don't want just one specific food truck. I want all licensed food trucks to be able to, to reach out.
I think it's a great idea, but I think you shouldn't interfere with the farmer's market on Fridays during their hours. So before or after their hours, I think would be good because then you're in competition. Cause I've noticed they've had a food truck or two out there.
I saw, I actually saw the food truck that was at our parking lot last Friday at their parking lot. And I, I felt a little betrayed almost, but.
Sure.
You know, they, they have a good customer base there too. And, you know, I support them. They're, they're fairly local too, my understanding, so.
So I, I, I would be all for it other than the hours of the farmer's market.
Yep.
Now, what if you had a bunch of food trucks say they want to come? Would you just let the market determine that? Or would you say, hey, we can only have two here or at the, I mean, I don't think it's gonna happen, but what if?
Well, what if I would, if, if it, it would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have like a blanket policy like, no, we only allow one. It would have to make good business sense. Like if we have room in the parking lot for two, go for it. You guys fight it out. Who, you know, whoever has the best food's gonna win.
Yep, okay.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna limit that, but I, I don't think we'd have room for like six or eight or ten, you know?
Right, that's what I mean.
It's gotta be within reason.
What if you just, if, if, I mean, if you get approached, just have a different one every weekend?
Yeah.
You know, like Thunder Brothers.
Mm-hmm.
They don't have more than one at a time.
Right, and I don't, I don't think we would have more than one. And, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna go out and solicit food trucks.
Right.
To come, but if, if the word gets out that, hey, we're making money, and I'm sure they'll, sure people in that industry talk to each other. I, I can only assume that they do, you know, they're.
They're, yeah, they have a, uh, I don't know what it's called, something through, it's a Minnesota Food Truck Association or whatever it's called, but, and they all communicate on there.
Yep, that's smart, that's smart.
Amongst each other.
No.
So are you trying to make this an event?
No, no, I'm just asking for permission to, to say yes when they call and ask, can we set up in your parking lot? Without having to jump through hoops or feel like I'm going against your guys' will.
So are you going, uh, it just sounds a little different. Just wanted to really narrow down what your plan is. It just sounds like any day of the week, anytime.
It'd be nice if you had advance notice so you could advertise.
Yeah.
On their Facebook page, hey, we're gonna have a food truck here this Saturday.
Well, when the, when the one pulled up the other Friday, I said, you know, feel free to throw it, you know, take a picture and throw it up on your Facebook page and, and all that. Um, you know, we have a pretty good social media presence. Um, you know, we've got thirteen hundred people following our Facebook page. I don't always have time to throw stuff up there, um, like I should, um, but, you know, if my, the, the reason I'm asking for this is if a food truck came and said, can you, can we set up here for a little while? I want to be able to say yes without any, any doubt. I don't want to start coordinating food trucks. I don't want to.
So you don't want to turn it into a, a, a weekly event or a monthly event or?
Not if it's, not unless it's gonna make us money. And I don't, I don't know at this point if it is, you know?
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve using your discretion on that. I think it's.
There's no motion, we can't.
Oh yeah, sorry, it's, yeah, you're right, it's cow.
Yeah, I'd say go for it.
I'd say this is, is, it's a gray zone.
Yeah.
Because it's a, it's a private property is what it says to have a food truck there, but yet it's kind of private property, but yet it's public property because it's the city's liquor store. So it's kind of a gray zone. That's why I had him bring it here to make sure that the consensus was that it's permitted at his discretion.
No, like he said, no favoritism.
I would just say that within, I mean, if it's gonna be multiple days, I mean, because we actually have an annual permit, right? So I don't want it to where you're just making that decision to have them there for six months or something like that. So if it's one day here and there and it's the same one, it, I mean, that's fine, but, but I mean, if you're looking at like an extended period of time, that I would like you to bring back.
Yep, and I, and I would be happy to do that, you know?
And they still will have to have a food truck license to go there. It's just not having the extended time, but yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I'm hungry.
Uh, moving on to E six, senior banners policy.
Good evening, um, committee. Uh, we have the, we were asked to, um, present a policy for graduating senior banners um, along downtown. Um, so I have some information that Jordan did put together, um, regarding this. And you'll see the policy is included within, um, the packet. There are thirteen poles located within the downtown area that currently have brackets on them for banners. The, so that would allow for twenty, up to twenty-six banners of students. Um, the policy states that, um, it would hold an eighteen by thirty-six banner. And getting banners printed on double sides would allow us to hang twenty-six. Um, and students can be recognized by their families for grad- graduating high school each year. The banners will be displayed for, during the month of, be displayed during the month of May and will be removed after graduation has concluded. Banners will be installed and removed by Public Works. An order form will be established each year by Parks, Recreation and Events Coordinator. Orders will be accepted from January first through April first each year. This will allow enough time to compile all of the orders and complete the designs necessary to send to the print shop for printing. The banners will display the year of the graduating class along with the student's name, a picture of the student. A high resolution digital photo must be provided with the order. The city of Isanty reserves the right to reject a photo if deemed inappropriate. Cost of the banners will be priced out ahead of time and the ordering fee will be set to half the cost of production per banner. Meaning that we'll take on the other half of the cost unless. Oh, it's shared. Oh, that's right, sorry.
The cost is fifty percent because you're running one half of the banner?
Yes, um, I knew that. If the person placing an order wishes to keep their banner, they will be charged the full price of that banner. Cause we'll then have to purchase two if both people would like to keep the banner.
I was just gonna ask you, how are you gonna do that?
Yes.
This person wants it and this person wants it and they're both on one on each side.
Right. So my recommendation is that we don't make it be an option, uh, to only print on one side because we have such a limited amount of poles and we, I anticipate us filling up quickly and it will almost have to be a first come, first served, which that'll need to be in the policy as well. Um, but the ability to have twenty-six, I think is good. We want to be able to have them double sided. And I think we could just make an additional line on the order form that if you want us to buy an additional one for you to have, maybe at your grad party, that they just pay the cost of it since we're sending it in a bulk kind of ordeal to the printers anyways. Um, and then we don't have to worry about coordinating, Public Works being careful, did it tear? Now we gotta order one. We could just throw them away at the end of the ceremonies would be my recommendation.
The polls, do they just have one bracket on one side of the poll?
So there are twenty-six total brackets downtown and there is one bracket on thirteen poles. So that's where the thirteen come from. Additional brackets cost twenty-five dollars. Um, so if we wanted to add thirteen additional brackets downtown, we would, could do that at our own cost of twenty-five dollars. Um, we could also add some to the other sides of the poles, which would increase the number. Yeah, so potentially we could then have a hundred and four downtown. We have an additional seventeen of the same lights on First Avenue through Bluebird Park. So there's another option to add more brackets there as well.
Okay, you think we just start with kind of what we've got and see how it goes and then?
I think that's the.
That's what I think.
And if it's real popular, maybe we'll have to add some brackets.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep, yep.
This is just a draft. It'll need to come back before council, so we'll send it through council.
Okay.
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 With a form.
All right, thank you guys. Uh, E seven, amendments to city code, chapter two twenty-seven to allow parking on the grass.
Okay, so this was discussed at our last meetings. Uh, I felt like, uh, work to incorporate all the direction that I had heard through those meetings of allowing grass. You can see that I included the chapter two-two-seven in your, um, in your packet that has the red line, uh, track changes on it.
I was gonna ask you that because mine doesn't have the red line on it.
You don't see red line?
No.
Uh, so the red line didn't show up.
Nope.
Okay. Sorry about that. Um, it's actually not in my packet either.
It didn't show up on some of my, my other one from, that we looked at from the last meeting as well on mine. There was only one thing that was highlighted in red.
If you don't mind, I am going to just, um, send it to you now in your email.
Okay.
And we can pull it up if that's okay. Uh, what's our next item? Why I do that? Do you want to move on to the code enforcement one? I'll just get this sent to you.
Yep. Uh, right. Uh, code enforcement. So E eight, code enforcement process continued discussion. And I'm guessing that this was kind of the discussion on?
I think it was, there's some discussion on council's behalf as far as complaint base, that whole, yes.
Okay, so the more I, and Travis made a good point after that meeting too, that, I mean, if you had two cops have to see you to get a speeding ticket. I mean, if you apply that logic and you start thinking about it, it's kind of like, eh, I don't know if that really makes a whole lot of sense. And, I mean, I, I do think that maybe complaints shouldn't be anonymous though, you know, I mean, they should at least, I mean, not that we have to tell people what the name is, but I mean, if you can't tell the city staff or the code enforcement officer what your name is, that maybe you shouldn't be able to make a complaint. But, um, or we should at least know that they're actually a resident that lives in town. You know, I think would be a fair, a fair criticism that it's not just some person from Cambridge coming here that has a beef with, uh, with somebody or, I don't know. I mean, that, that, can we make a requirement like that if we're gonna take complaints or what are your thoughts?
Well, I know that, um, the person that complains, we can't divulge that to anybody else.
Right.
There's that piece of the puzzle. Um, I don't know if there's gonna be anything precluding this as we, I mean, there's no other element in law enforcement where we're requiring you to identify yourself to, to voice your complaint, whether it's a criminal activity complaint or whatnot. But with that being said, if somebody calls anonymously and says there's a pizza joint in town that's doing something illegal, but it's no, there's no, no substance to it and they don't want to say who they are, we're gonna take that in a lot different light than if they want to come and meet with us face to face and say who they are.
Right.
So there's some of that.
Right.
But if it's something like, um, I don't know, like, um, a vehicle parked in the grass up on cement blocks and it looks dangerous and tabs are expired. Well, you really, it, it can be anonymous because you're just gonna do a drive-by and verify that complaint, right?
Correct.
Without knowing who complained about it. And if they're obviously in violation, you don't need to know who called, made that call, you know?
Yeah, it's just hard. I mean, the resident that brought it up was, you know, and rightfully so, because you get people that go around, they got somebody to complain about them and then they go around and complain about five other people and it's like, you know, that's not really very neighborly of you, you know? I mean, so I get, I get where they're coming from.
She was gonna do the same thing, so it's just continuous.
Exactly, exactly. So, I don't know, it just, it was, uh.
That's been going on as long as I've lived in this city.
Yeah, something we said we would discuss and so that's why we're, why we're doing it, but.
It's not an easy thing. I mean, code enforcement's not an easy thing to, to, to even enact, right? I mean, to go to somebody's house and tell them, dude, it's, it's difficult. And it's also difficult to then go to the other side of it, say, well, how come this isn't being solved, resolved quickly enough for me? You know, so it's a lot different than other things we deal with in law enforcement. It, it is challenging on both sides of it, the people that complain, because they don't like the process that it takes several weeks or months or whatever it might be to get a resolution.
Yeah.
People that complain, I don't obviously like it either. So it's not, it's not the fancy part of law enforcement or even the fancy part of government.
Well, any other thoughts on that?
I thought all, I thought all complaints were anonymous because he can't divulge the information anyway, so it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, I mean, I just was trying to think of a, something, but. I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how else you do it, you know, yeah, but.
I mean, I, I prefer to leave it as complaint driven.
Yeah, for sure, absolutely, yeah. It's the best, it's the lesser of, lesser of two evils.
His time or somebody else driving around looking to see if somebody, whatever, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, I can drive, I can guarantee you, I can drive by ten houses a day and say, this guy's violation. I, I don't care.
Right.
You know, and I feel, leave me alone as well as I leave you alone. So that's just how I feel on it.
Right.
I think just leave it as code, as a complaint driven and, and it's obviously a synonymous anyway, so.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Um, so E nine, the mailbox one, I said I'd bring that one up too, which said, uh, it sounds like it's probably kind of been, have you, have they had any contact with people there?
One, one contact.
Okay.
So they had one, and, and I don't know if that's resolved itself or not after that fact.
I don't know, yeah, I mean, I know that they, they would like us, the, the resident that complained about it would, pushed again when I talked to them to do a, do a code info, you know, actually create city code or create an ordinance to prevent people from parking in front of the mailboxes.
I thought it was already a federal fence to park in front of mailboxes. That's what I always thought it was.
I did too.
But, I mean, I don't know how you, I mean, he said other, other cities have it. I mean, Blaine has it, I guess.
And I did look into, there are other cities that have it, so it's not uncommon. It just, the challenge, so back in, when, many years ago, mail always came between a certain time. So you could say there's no parking at this time. Well, the mail comes at all days, all night, so you have to have no parking in front of mailboxes, even if they're your own.
Yeah.
Because we can't, we're not gonna decipher if that's your brother, sister's uncle's car that you said could park in front of your own mailbox. So it's either there's no parking in front of mailboxes, that'd be the only way to actually enforce that.
Yeah, I just think it's pretty, pretty tough, yeah. I mean, it does give you the opportunity to enforce it, I guess, if you need it, just like we'd made the argument earlier about other situations, I mean, but, I don't know.
Complaint based?
No, it's just not really a complaint based. It's, there's, I, like I said, I thought it was a federal law.
But we, could we make it an ordinance that's, and then it's just like everything else ordinance wise, where you only look at a complaint based? Just like we just did with the.
You would have to, you'd have to, you'd have to have it stipulated in code.
Yeah, an ordinance.
City code ordinance that you cannot park in front of it.
Right.
Then, so if that's the point, then it isn't really a complaint driven base. They drive by and see somebody parked in front of a mailbox, they give them a ticket. I mean, that's exactly, that's the only way you're gonna handle that.
Complaint based stuff is your public nuisance properties, stuff that our CSO deals with. Where CSO doesn't deal with, you know, parking in no parking zones, which would be, it'd be in the same chapter as that. So then you're getting a little different, it's a lot different than parking in the grass.
But more because they weren't satisfied with the solution that we.
But, you know, here's the best solution they can do without really driving problems. Go out and put a nice little sign out there by yourself, please do not park in front of my mailbox.
Yeah.
I mean, we had to, I, I know they did that at Apollo shop because the landscape company was parking in front of the mailbox. So the mailman comes by, he can't get in there, he drives away. They're not getting their mail. So they put a sign out there and they don't park there anymore.
Right.
I mean, they haven't since and there's no officer been called or anything been done.
Yeah.
It's just common courtesy at that point.
Has this ever been a problem really in the past?
I wouldn't say like a problem. I've heard the same complaint maybe three years ago on one incident, same thing. And, and the same discussion was brought up three years ago.
Did that one subside itself or haven't heard?
It must have, I haven't heard since, because the same discussion kind of came up as ordinance wise. That's why I looked into the ordinances to see and realized that, I mean, either got to go all or nothing. I mean, that, it's because it's, especially the way the mail goes now.
It's once every three years, I don't see a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I think Steve's, I think your point about just put a sign out there and say, please don't park in front of my mailbox. I mean, just for the, yeah, I mean, if, it just would be too messy for us to try to handle and, yeah. Okay, uh, so we want to go back now to, uh, E seven?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
When I converted it to a PDF. When I converted it to a PDF, it got rid of my track change code.
I looked at it earlier and I said, boy, I, I, I mean, a red line would really help me.
I think I referenced track changes.
I remember what we talked about, but I don't remember all that, all that.
Yeah, so if you could go to your email box, you'll see, uh, it's the same version for the public listening, that was within the packet, it's just the changes are red line, and when we post the ordinance, if this does go forward, uh, the track changes will be posted, so everyone can see exactly what's changing, cause I find that that's very helpful for the public. Um, so, starting on page three, uh, there's a very slight minor revision to impervious surface, just to match MPCA, so if people are comparing different documents, we don't wanna be, uh, too different, so you'll see a minor change there. And then if we go on, uh, it is going to be...
I still don't have red lines.
I, I don't have red, I have blue lines.
It's in your email.
Yeah.
It could be different colors depending on your version.
It's not red.
Yeah, it could, it might not be red, but it would be any underlined color change.
Okay, so if it's underlined, traffic control signal, that whole section is what's potentially changed?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, it may not be red, but it's gonna be track changes, so... Uh, the next one, if you go to page seven, five, so this one on my screen is purple, five B, we did notice that we needed to clarify that, um, this has nothing to do with grass, but why we're updating a chapter, we might as well look at it in its entirety, make sure that there's no other amendments that need to be made. Um, B says, along either side of railroad avenue, beginning at the intersection of Palomino Road Southeast to its intersection with South Passage Southwest, is what that should've been, for no parking. That's what's currently posted out there, just was, uh, incorrect statement in here, or it had changed along the way at some point in time. And then if we go on to page eleven, so this is section eight B, this is starting with the changes for allowing to, um, people to allow to park on grass. So, one thing I do wanna say is, I did mirror an image, and whether you, I'm not sure if you like it or not, or if we find it's helpful, I didn't see a copyright on there, so I did use Blaine's image in here, um, and kinda based the language off that, cause I think visuals are great for people to understand where, where they can go and park. But if you find that that's not what we want, or we wanna change it, I can make a new graphic, but for all intents and purposes of just having this discussion, I used Blaine's graphic and I just changed some of the wording. Um, so in B, that's where, uh, it references the attachment, that's that image of residential property, showing where, um, by hash marks where you could park. And then in one, all motorized vehicles and units in the front yard, so I made a differentiation between front yard, side yard, and rear yard, shall be parked or stored on impervious surface, the impervious surface shall be no smaller than the footprint of the entire unit or vehicle, so that's the same, just reference front. Number two, all mo, this is all new, all motorized vehicles and units in the side yard may be parked or stored on grass alongside the garage or house, if within ten feet of the structure or driveway, and a minimum of ten feet from the property line, that's to not impede any kind of setbacks. Uh, the next one, number three, is also new, recreational vehicles and non-motorized units in the rear yard may be parked or stored on grass, no closer than five feet from the property line. Four, also new, motorized vehicle parking in the rear yard is permitted if paved driveway extends to detached garage, and setbacks per zoning code are met. And then I struck out, uh, the other, the old three that was in there, but because that's saying that you had to be on impervious, took out any other language about being on only impervious. Going down to the new number eleven, so it was written in there that they could only park a non-motorized trailer with things such as snowmobiles, ATVs, other recreational units during the timeframe between November first and March thirty-first, I struck that out, so then that would permit it year-round. Uh, twelve, struck, stricken most of that, because that did not allow for anything out of impervious. Um, again, took out the timeframe. On number fourteen, number fifteen is new, all motorized vehicles and units are required to be maintained in such a manner to prevent any fluids dropping, fluids dropping or leaking. Leaks are required to be cleaned and properly disposed of, and are prohibited for entering the city's storm sewer system. Should be a given, but I thought it was very appropriate to put that in here, uh, as well as the next one, motorized vehicles, RVs, and other units are not permitted to be parked within drainage and utility easement areas. Again, that kinda goes back with that number fifteen, if it did happen to leak, we certainly don't want it going directly into the storm sewer. But, other than that, they would have discretion of where to park it. Um, let's see. Then, if you go to section eleven, I highlighted all of B. While I didn't quite, um, gather direction of exactly what to do, I know that it was, uh, discussed about not wanting it to be, ma, ma, making residents have to pave their driveway to be able to get permits, I know it was shared by council member Heman, so I highlighted that for if there's continued discussion, but I didn't make any changes to it. So, I'm just, I'm looking for direction, if I'm on the right track, if there's additional things you wanna see, if you keep scrolling down, you'll see that image that I just, I had referenced, um, that was borrowed from Blaine, and then put some, just, um, copy the language in there.
So, I have a question about the graphic, um, so I see of a detached garage, and I see the attached garage. Now, why, next to the detached garage, can you not have a vehicle parked next to it, but you can on the regular garage? Does, I mean, could, is that something that could be changed? Because, I mean, a lot of old Isanti has detached garages. And if you're allowing it next to a attached garage, what's the real difference?
I think that that is something that you could determine that you wanna do.
Okay.
It's just not in their graphic, but we could, we could do that.
Sure.
I am not sure why they excluded that, to be honest. As long as it's meeting the setback and the distance from that property line, I'm not sure what the difference would be other, I'm not sure.
Okay. And then, as far as, there are gonna be people, I'm sure, that will park off to the side of their driveway ten feet, but say, like in this, in the graphic here on the, the attached garage, what if it's to the, to the left side of the driveway, but it's still further than, what was it, ten feet from the property line? Can you park a vehicle there then?
So, I thought that, that was direction from council, that you wanted it within ten feet of the garage. And then I just wanted to make it clear, just in case their garage was built before, I don't even know what standard, that if their garage was, let's say, ten feet from the property line, that they couldn't park, park there because they're too close, so...
I thought it was ten feet from the driveway. Is that...
I did, I thought I, I think I did structure.
A structure?
Because if you wanna allow it to be parked on the side of a garage, there would be no driveway there.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So, it'd be...
Okay.
You could also park on, you know, on the side of the driveway, if your driveway went back to your yard, like if that garage was way in the back. But in the front yard, it's to park on the driveway. So, for example, for that, the, um, couple who came in and spoke on, on their issue, if they wanted to just park their truck next to the driveway, but not next to the garage, I don't think that that's what this is saying, because I thought we said to do on the side of the garage, so it has to be to the side of the garage, to be on grass.
And is theirs to the side of the garage completely? I thought, I don't think, I don't think it was.
The pontoon boat is on the side of the garage, and the truck is on the grass in the front.
Yeah.
That's what I was just gonna say, yeah, alright.
Yeah, so...
Right, that's what I thought it was too, but I couldn't remember for sure.
Then that would still not be allowed to have the truck parked in front of the pontoon.
Right.
If we made it this way.
I think within ten feet of the garage or the driveway, realistically, as long as it's not ten, not too close to a property line.
And allow it in the front yard?
Yeah, I mean, hmm, I don't know.
I, it's tricky, I mean, it kinda makes sense for the, the couple who talk, came in and spoke on them, but if you put it to everybody, cause this will be across the board.
Right.
Think of all the front yards that could be filled with a, a couple vehicles double-stacked on the side of their driveway.
Right. I mean, what if it's atta, attached to a trailer, attached to a trailer that's parked next to, I don't know. I mean, at, at the end of the day, it's your property, you should be able to, use it how you want, but then obviously you have to have within reason too, you know, so...
I'm against all of it, so, I have no opinion.
I mean, could it be...
We talked about ten feet from the driveway.
Next to, yeah, that was the whole point, cause it's not impervious surface. I mean, could that, and what about in a backyard? Could it be ten feet in, like, if someone has a backyard, a driveway in their backyard, since you can't really see it from the street, I don't, I don't know.
So, I do have it within the structure or driveway, but that's on the side, not the front.
I just wanna eliminate people from having all this shit in their backyard. If I go sit on my deck and I look at everybody's shit in their backyard, I'm not gonna be happy.
Did that, be low and build a bigger garage?
That, other than that, but I don't wanna sit out there and look at somebody have ten cars sitting in their backyard. I don't care.
Right.
It's my tax dollars too.
I understand.
And my property is still, is still, that's why I'm saying, I, it's...
Why can't they?
There's a limit on how many you can have.
There's a limit on how many.
Well, I know, but what my point was saying is, I just don't need to think that we need to start cluttering everybody's backyard.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't think that we need to allow that.
Forty-foot RV sitting in the backyard?
Huh?
Forty-foot RV sitting in the backyard?
Well, I mean, I, personally, I can't stand somebody having a bunch of vehicles sitting in their driveway, but that's not, that's just me. If you want to, that's your, up to you yourself, but I can't, I don't even like a, my kid coming to my house and parking in front of my garage. Drives me nuts, I hate it. But that's, but it, it has to happen.
Another option to consider is to do an improved surface, so something like a class five, and you could limit the square foot, the footprint of it, if you wanted to. I mean, I hate to make city code changes for one example, but if that's what you wanna see across the board...
Well, here's the thing, is that, cause that may be one example sort of that we're thinking about, but that is, like Megan's parents' house, they have the driveway that's basically a single-car driveway, but it widens out to the size of the garage at the very front, and then it's gravel kind of like, well, it may not even be gravel, it's just sandy, cause they've been driving on it for so long, so they treat it as a two-car driveway all the way down. Well, it's still the driveway, you know, I mean, it's obviously driveway. But technically, if you're parked in the sand part off of the pavement, well, you're not really on the pavement, are you?
Not grass.
But, but there's a lot of houses that, that probably does fit the description.
There's six cars on my street that don't really have a driveway, it's just their path, and, and that's on my, I mean...
So, if the reason is to make it be aesthetically pleasing of why these ordinances exist in the first place, does it look more aesthetically pleasing to have it be on improved, so it's gravel, class five, or maybe it's recycled asphalt or something?
Right.
That we're gonna permit them to have?
And I think the folks that were in here the other day, they do have class five, and they said underneath the grass there, that...
I would, I would prefer to see if they're gonna be parking in the yard, I'd just see it.
Where the truck is parked, there's nothing.
Next to the garage it is, for sure, I could see it.
On a, on an improved surface would be fair.
Improved surface, to me, that's even just...
Not on concrete though, that's, you know?
Car, so not, not paved.
I mean, it could be unpaved, obviously, too, but I mean, an improved surface, that would be realistic, I think, cause if you wanna park something and it's not gonna cost you a couple hundred bucks to put down gravel, it's not a huge deal. But it would look better than grass growing up through cars or whatever.
You still get that.
I mean, you, you still would, yeah, right.
I agree with you.
So, just to read the definition of...
If you're gonna talk about the front yard, I mean, the backyard, I think we're, everything else, I think, is good, but if you're within ten feet of the driveway in the front yard, and you put down, you know, some type of improved surface, gravel or whatever, it might be...
So, I wanna read the definition, make sure everyone's clear, so improved surface is areas consistent of pavers or patio block, so they could do pavers if they wanted, um, not less than sixty millimeters, two and three-eighths inches thick, and with gaps not exceeding four, a quarter inch, sorry, or larger. It could be crushed rock, gravel, class five, to a depth not less than six inches. And I think the reason why it has the depth there is you don't have weeds growing through it, so again, it's more that, the aesthetic of it, looking at it, it looks like just a nice gravel patio.
Standard, standard on that is usually three inches.
But they said six, because they...
Grow through, right. Most guys lay down three on that.
Yeah, it doesn't matter if you lay three, six, or eight, you're gonna still have grass or whatever.
Yep.
You're supposed to be able to kill sambers with lime, and I've seen them grow in lime piles, so...
I mean, I have eight inches in mine, and we still, we still...
I'm good with them scraping off the grass and parking on the sand, that's me though.
That is true, it, it is sandy enough already.
And then putting a border on there showing that, hey, you know, we're designated this as a, as a parking spot.
So, you could say, unmaintained, you could use the word maintained, if you want people to, like, if they had this gravel area, and then they didn't park on it for a number of years, and it just kinda got ugly, you could say maintained, improved surface, if you want people to go out there with roundup.
Some gray area there, but I think that's, that's probably not a horrible thing.
I mean, if that's what you're, I, it all depends on what you're trying to achieve, I guess.
Kinda what we're going for, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I like that language.
But get rid of the six inch, I think, I mean, that's, I don't know, most guys only lay down three or four when they do it, most dump truck drivers.
I think, when she's saying maintained, I think that, then you don't, you're not requiring that necessarily, but... But, yeah, I mean, I mean, really what we're doing this for is so you can park the vehicles alongside the driveway, and, you know...
Within a reason?
If, if within a reason, yeah, I mean, we don't wanna a junkyard, and, I mean, that was, people do not want that either, but, and I, people do not want their, to have to look at their neighbor's backyard and see a bunch of crap back there either, you're, you're right about that.
Hey, I, it drives me nuts when I drive by people's houses, and they got weeds growing all over their flipping grass.
Right.
Mow your damn yard! But, it, it's not me.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna go and make a call and say, hey, this guy ain't mowing his grass.
Yeah.
But, it, it's still, you know what? My property is my investment for my retirement. And when you take my property investment away from me, you're, now you're gonna start pissing me off. Plain and simple.
Yeah, we gotta find a balance there, but I, I like that language there.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm thinking, or just make sure we're on the same page, so maintained, improved area within ten feet of the garage, because we don't want it to come all the way down to the roads, we have gravel going out to the road, and we can't widen, technically widen the driveway, so it would be, like, the driveway would come up, and we're gonna allow them to basically do gravel like this, right? We want it to be maintained, um, within ten feet of the driveway in the front yard.
And then what was the backyard?
Uh, the backyard, we allowed it on grass.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Not, not within an easement.
No, in the backyard?
Well, what, she, we're talking about the front.
Oh, the front yard?
I don't know.
Did your house, can, do you have someone that butts up to your backyard?
Do I have somebody? What was you saying, maybe if I'm scraping the grass off and just parking on the sand, which is what Megan's parents...
They had an RV parked in the backyard, you're gonna see it, right?
Oh, yeah. I could, I could see in his house, looking out my window.
Park beside the driveway.
I can look over his fence and look in his backyard.
So, if you're, put your house on the market, and you got an RV, so...
That's what's happening in reality, right? So, I would say...
Why should we force them to spend five hundred dollars or two thousand to put gravel?
Yeah.
So, for...
Just say ten feet from the driveway.
So, ten feet from the driveway and, and enough to accommodate a truck, so if they're hauling the boat or something, nineteen feet down, not to impede the right-of-way.
But still maintained, even if they just scrape it?
I think, I think, just say ten feet from the driveway and call it good.
Yeah.
George is right, there's hundreds, hundreds and hundreds of people in town right now using their driveway like that. Why not just make it simple?
That is consistent with parking sizes that we require within the city, so a parking space is nineteen by nine, so...
So, if...
An FYI.
Say if somebody, for example, parked a, a car next to their garage, and a bunch of weeds and like three-foot grass around it, that would be a regular ordinance for a yard, correct? That could be enforced for them?
That'd be nuisance violation for long grass.
Okay, yep, okay. So, that still could be addressed, okay. So, that kinda takes place with the maintained, kind of, okay.
I think it'd be more if they were using this parking, or, like, for example, if you had people who live there currently, always, always park there. They always going in and out, new people bought it, they never use it, now it starts looking pretty rough. Um, most, I think, most people aren't taking their mower over the class five for a while, until it really grows over, so we want them to maintain it or get rid of it, haul the class five out of there, return it to grass. Or just spray some roundup on it, so it looks like you've maintained it.
I don't know, what do you guys think?
Say that one more time.
The maintain part?
You were saying if... I didn't catch it.
Maintaining the class five?
Right.
So, I think if we use the word maintain, it makes it so that if you have somebody who, a homeowner who used to park on class five all the time, the side area, and then they didn't park there anymore, and it's gonna be overgrown of almost like a driveway-looking thing, they should either get rid of that part, that class five, take it out, and return it back to grass, or maybe spray roundup or something on there to keep it maintained. Because most people, I, I mean, I, anyone who mows next to a driveway of class five, it, it gets pretty ugly and you break some windows. It gets pretty ugly and you break some windows, so I think most time people wouldn't do that, so just, I think using the word maintain, yeah, it's a gray zone, but I think it gets across that aesthetic that we wanna make sure that your neighbor doesn't have to look at, at that.
I think I'd agree with that, maintained, I don't know.
I mean, I'm fine with that, or I'm fine with just saying ten feet from the driveway.
Yeah.
One more reason not to put class five down, because if they decide not to park there anymore, it'll just, just be grassy good enough.
Somebody bought the house, and they don't park there, that's what she was referring to.
I know.
I like maintained in there personally.
It's not like we have to make a final decision, what, what do you guys, what do you guys think you're gonna lean toward? That's what I would lean toward, is just saying ten feet from the driveway at the paved surface, um, in the front yard, and then.
I agree.
Improved surface, right?
Yes.
The improved, yeah.
Yeah, well, and not even, well, yeah.
I thought you said paved just now, so I was making sure.
It's ten feet off of the improved surface, correct, because.
The improved is the class five, so it's impervious, so it's ten feet off the impervious.
What if you don't have impervious at all in your, as your driveway, like, okay.
Yeah, then you're in that grandfather clause that we should talk about.
Okay.
Okay, so I think I have enough direction.
Yeah.
I think, and I'll look at some driveways and make sure that it doesn't extend too far into that right of way, um, and if you feel comfortable, I will post it, you don't have to approve it, we can change it if needed.
One thought though with that, just to, should it only be on one side of the driveway, do you want people parking on ten feet off of both sides of their driveway? Cause that could get kinda messy.
It's only one side of the driveway I ever see.
That's usually.
We do not.
Normally that's what you see, but.
Yeah, we don't specify, so if you don't want it to be allowed on both sides, you'd have to specify.
You're right, I mean, when, in reality, what people do is they park on one side, they pick one side, and then they, yeah, but I think we should maybe note that in there, that it's one side, you can't, yeah, so that at least stays somewhat uniform.
Not one side, as your, your choice, okay.
Pick a side, yeah.
So when are you gonna post, after, when are you gonna post a new ordinance for this?
So when we, um, post an ordinance, we post them at city hall, on our website, and also in the paper, and we have to pay, post it for ten days, and then it will come back to a city council meeting, so that's enough time for people to hopefully have seen it, make public comment if they want.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, I apologize, actually, the notice for the posting doesn't go in the paper, it's once it's approved, so it's website and the public boards, we have one in city hall and one by the post office.
And your plan is to do that when? Not, this, this, end of this week, next week, or on this, okay?
Yes, unless I get different direction, if you, if you wanna look at this again further, I, I would like, before I post anything or make any changes, to have a conversation on that. Uh, second to the last paragraph, so section eleven, the grandfather clause, this council member Heeman, you brought this up, and that, because it costs us money to codify every change, I recommend that we wait to get this a hundred percent ready to, to go with all changes, so. If we want to discuss it this evening or another meeting, I will wait, not post anything until we discuss this, if there's some changes that council's requesting.
I think we should get rid of that, that eleven B.
I agree, um, you could keep the grand, if there has to be a grandfather clause, keep it with the first sentence, and stop it visible on the ground, period, and don't even have a date. Um, every, every driveway, well, there's not one person on Tyler or Fourth Street then, basically, who could, could. Ask for a permit to extend their garage or build an accessory.
Same thing with Broadway Street, yep.
If, I, I am okay with the, I, I'm worried about the new construction piece, I really wanna make sure that's covered, because we do have driveways that are, um, installed in escrow, and they're not allowed to be paved because of, um. Trucks not being allowed on the roads for a certain extended period of time, so I think we should make sure that we do require new construction homes to be paved, like in this, I don't wanna.
This is just a grandfather clause, so.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think about that part of it, yeah.
So they're just not existing.
Correct, but I just wanna, I don't know, I just. Need to double check that.
I mean, is that really referring though to A above it, more than anything, I mean, in the event of new construction?
I mean, the one possibility, the only thing I can think that this would apply to is if you had a current old farmhouse that was in city limits, you know, annexed in, and you were gonna demo that house, so you built a new house. I think that that would apply here, but I don't think it would ha, apply to any of our, that had a driveway, an existing unimproved driveway, I don't think it would apply to any of our new construction homes, because there's no driveway at all, this is just a grandfather clause for unim, unimproved driveways, so I think it's for actually a new home on an existing dwelling home.
So let's say, the last house on the block on Fourth Avenue burns down, they gotta build a new house, ground, ground a gravel road, so they're gonna have to tar their driveway to the gravel road?
If this is in here, yes.
Right, that, that's my point.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that, yeah, we should, the whole thing really could go, huh? As far as B.
Mm-hmm.
Because that would add, well, it depends how long their driveway is, a lot of them are long over there.
Yep.
Cause then we're basically only saying that if it's a property that had a gravel driveway before May first, two thousand and seven, it's allowed to keep it regardless of what happens on the property.
Right.
Right.
With, with eleven A, right?
And, and let them, let them get a, it's to the city's benefit if they wanna build a garage or ex, add onto their house, because the tax rate will go up, but to have them spend another.
One thousand to a hundred thousand, yeah.
Yeah, one thousand to a hundred thousand on some of these driveways, just, just to be able to add on a thirty thousand dollar addition.
To tar, to tar my driveway at the new house was gonna be like four thousand to tar it, and then concrete was, you know, more, but, yeah, but, but I mean, your house.
Mine too.
Well, yeah, both of you guys, your driveways.
Seven hundred feet, I have no idea what it costs, plus the pad.
Well, and probably when this was written, they didn't have some of those driveways like where, where you're living, I mean, you weren't part of the city at that time, so I mean.
Well, Broadway Street though, there's a lot of unpaved, and almost, almost, like, almost all of them are unpaved, or.
I always assumed the city would treat the properties.